Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting of City Council of Pearland for Monday, November the 11th, year 2019. I'll ask Councilmember Moore if he would do the invocation today, and Councilmember Perez, if you'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your head with me. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us together here today. We thank you for the veterans that have served and allow us this way of life that we live, protecting it day in and day out. We ask that you watch over our first responders and all of our veterans. We ask that you watch over each and every one of us here as we travel home tonight. We ask that you guide us in making the decisions that are of your liking. And we ask that you keep us warm through the night and keep those that are out on the street that may not have a home to go to, keep them warm tonight in the cold weather. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
You'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And if I could just make one more mention, happy birthday to the Marine Corps. They celebrated 244 years on Sunday. And one last thing, if you could please keep the family of Susan Randolph in your prayers. She passed away Saturday night. I don't know, many people in the city here knew Susan Randolph. She was a great lady, and we'll keep her family in our prayers.
Mayor, why don't we recognize those in the audience that have served or are serving in our military, and let's give them a round of applause. If you're in the military or have served in the military, please stand up. All voters present? It's hard to believe it's already Veterans' Day in a year or so. It's, I read the communication from one of our senators. He sends it out at every special event. And he mentioned that most of the, Texas has one of the highest population of ex-service persons in the country. And that his concern was that the way that we have been responding to them, and the fact that there have been so many veteran suicides, and strong mental recollections of some of the terrible things that they faced while in service, and they're still patient today, that this needs to be addressed, and we need to remember those particular type of people. And that was the wording of Senator Cardy. Moving in our agenda to roll call, which is item three, and this, certainly, I'm using the same agenda that you have. It looks like this. And item three is roll call. We do have all of our councilmembers here today, bright and shiny faces. And as we move into our agenda to item number four, which is citizen comments, I'll ask Councilmember Little if he would proceed with that particular portion of our agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two citizens wishing to speak tonight. One of them is on an agenda item. We'll wait till we get to that item. The other one wishes to speak on election schedule, Scott Fueles. Please state your name and address, and let me get your comments to three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Hello, I'm Scott Fueles, 3203 Forrester, Pearland. I want to talk about my favorite topic today, which is moving our local elections to November. Pearland is going to have to vote five times in 2020, in all likelihood, just like we did in 2018. That's a lot of times to ask our citizens to go to the polls. It could be more convenient. It could be cheaper for the city. And I really think we should be considering moving our elections to November, because then we can get that down to three times instead of five, and that's a big difference. If we had ranked choice voting, we could, in addition to that, we could get it down to two times. So there's a lot that we can do to make our local elections more convenient for the citizens and less costly for the city. I know that one thing that concerns some people about moving the election is that it might benefit one party or the other. I don't think that should be a consideration, but for those for whom it is, take a hard look at the election we just had, which was in November. I'm not going to say any more about that. I'm just saying, look carefully at what happened, and maybe put your mind at ease a little bit. And the last thing I'll say is that this is easily within the power of the council to do. We can move it with a resolution, which is what Missouri City did. We can move it with a charter amendment, which even though we have a charter review committee, the council is fully empowered to add whatever changes to the charter they wish. They don't have to come from that committee. So that can be done, and it can be put in the ballot at any time if you want the voters to vote on it, which would be completely reasonable if that's what you want to do. The other thing I wanted to say is that I would remind you, I've spoken to Larry Taylor's office, and even though state law currently prohibits moving elections to November, that is frequently changed, and he's prepared to get that legislation done for us, either in response to a resolution from the Pearland City Council or with a simple letter from the mayor. So the road is paved. All you guys have to do is act, and we can make this less costly for the city and more convenient for the citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I complete your report. Okay, moving in our agenda to item number five, public hearings, and there are none tonight. Item six is the consent agenda, and as Mayor Proton, if there are any items to be removed from the consent agenda.
There are, Mayor. Councilman Owens would like to pull items E, F, I, and L.
Give me those numbers again.
E, F, I, and L.
E, F, L, E, F, I, E, F, I, and L. Okay. Ephil. That sounds like evil, doesn't it, almost? Moving to address all of this, Councilmember Orlando, would you present this to her?
Sure, Mayor. Consideration and possible action on-
With the exception of those four.
Consideration and possible action on the consent agenda with the exceptions of items E, F, I, and L. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. We're in discussion.
Mayor, before we start council discussions, a citizen would like to speak on items E and F. Jeff Hunkle, if you could come up to the microphone. State your name and address. Let me get your comments to three minutes, please. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Hunkle. I live at 3912 Oakwood Drive North. Actually, I just had some questions about E and F. So the Envirodyne Laboratories gave a bid of $101,000 for wastewater laboratory testing, but the renewed contract is for $121,000, which is a difference of $19,860. And I was just wondering, can this amount be explained? And if it falls under miscellaneous category, where can I find the details for this overage? And then, almost piggybacking off that number F, or excuse me, letter F, Eastex gave the second competitive bid on the same wastewater, but their bid was a little bit higher, so I assume that's why they weren't selected at $157,000. But they were being awarded a secondary contract of $55,980. But there were no details of the service given, nor how this amount was calculated. So I was just wondering if I could find out details for those as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item E is a recommendation for-
Right.
Oh. I believe, Mayor, you got to pass a motion for the items on the consent that were not polled yet first? I don't think you voted that.
We haven't voted yet. We have a motion and a second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, so we'll make that staff report.
Thank you, Mayor.
We got to deal with the items that are still, that were not polled, so you can vote on those.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Consent agenda items A through M, with the exception of items E, F, I, and L. Pass seven to zero.
Okay. Councilmember, would you present? Item I, item E, for our consideration as a new business.
So, yeah, I'll present that, and then I guess we'll give staff the opportunity to explain E and F.
Yes.
Okay. So, consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019-270, so moved.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second on the floor. Staff report.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Item E is a recommendation for renewal. Envirodyne does testing for us as required by TCQ, both water and wastewater side. We bid this three years ago, so this is the third and final renewal option. They performed well for us. They perform a variety of services. They are the primary. Item F is the secondary backup, just so we have that lined up in case Envirodyne were ever not to be able, because of schedules or whatever, be able to perform. So I guess we might have some answers. We renewed it three years ago. I don't know if the difference is the escalator. There's no overage. It's just an estimated amount. We pay for the rates that are prescribed three years ago, and so we pay for what we get. And the purpose of that item is just based on historical performance, what we guess we'll need for the next year coming up. But in terms of the, Clarence can add any more to that?
Yes, sir. That is correct. That is actually the last renewal on this contract, but there are some additional testing that we suspect that we will need, just based on water quality, things like that, such as we've increased our testing in the Canterbury area, as everybody knows the water quality complaints. So that's all that is. And then the secondary is literally if we can't, which is the next item, if we can't, if this lab, for some reason, we call them for some emergency testing, additional testing, they cannot work into their schedules, then we roll over to the secondary.
So bottom line, it's not a bid for a set equipment or something like that. It's for services during the year, and in the last three years, it's expanded a little bit, and we anticipate keeping up with the new, any new regulations and new areas. And so that's why the amount's estimated at the 131, 121.
Does the council have a question or comment on item E from the staff report?
Yes, Mayor. How often have we had to use the secondary lab in the past year?
I actually don't know that I have an answer for that right this second, unless additional staff does. That was not a question that I anticipated. David, do we know? Three or four times, as you heard.
And that was because of not being able to keep up with the schedule?
Usually it has to do with, say, we having water quality issue over the weekend or late night hours, something like that. For some reason, Envirodyne cannot get out to get that, or because of their schedule already overloaded, then that's when we'll call on Eastex to do that. And one thing I forgot to mention a second ago, when we do increase our testing, as everybody knows, Pearland is a very rapidly, still, despite, some people think we're built out, a rapidly growing community. So the TCQ is very strict, like they give us the guidelines, once we reach X amount of population, we do X amount of more testing for this, and so on and so on. So each time we reach a new plateau, we've got to do more testing.
Any other question or comment from council?
Yeah, on mine, Mayor, and I think one of the questions that was asked, and I think on that, the low bid was $101,870, and it came out $121,730. And I'm assuming that, probably answering my own question, that the other part, the $14,000 was added to it, but it's, or 21, and it's not been approved in the budget yet, right?
No, there's a budget for contractual services. I understand, I'm sorry.
Well, on the budget amount, you got in here FY '20, $107,612. You got $14,118 pending-
That's just for the next fiscal year, yeah.
Okay, so when you add those two together, that comes up with the $121,730. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, that, and then, I guess I'll, that's what I was wanting to find out, to make sure that's what, that was what was the difference on these, that we have in there. The other question I have is on item F, which is a duplication, and I think you probably answered some of that, but I do have a question on it. So that's the only thing I have on this one, Mayor, just clarification on the low bid and the number of $121,730.
And just for my clarity then, so the discrepancy, or not really discrepancy, but just the fact that it goes over 101, this is just because we don't know exactly how many services we're going to use, we're going to pay for what we end up using, and we would, the difference if there was one, would be relinquished back to the budget?
No, the numbers that Member Owens said, as stated there, that's an estimated amount for this current fiscal year, and then the balance is what we estimate that would run it through from October through November for the-
Right, right. I was talking, sorry, about the 101,870 that was bid, not the-
And again, this isn't a bid per se for a professional services contract, and so, as you stated, and as you know, it's our estimated amount, and based on performance the last two years, and then the additional growth in the system and areas that we want to test, so.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
One thing I would ask on some of these that was coming out, like that additional money, I'd like to see in the future if we do that based upon the low bid and what it is for this current year, if we could have some kind of reflection on this of how much money we spent this current year. Okay? That would give us some understanding that, you know, that maybe we spent $95,000 last year or whatever, and we expected a little bit of an increase for that, but we don't have anything to stand on of how much was spent last year on that.
I think we had started to add those, or if we missed that on this one, I don't have it here in front of me, but we'll make sure we continue to do that.
Okay.
I think I see it on here when I look at the unit price. That's what stands out to me, that the unit price for Envirodyne just seems so much better if we're looking at anticipatory numbers for how many we're going to use. It seems like Envirodyne is the obvious choice, so. Especially on the primary water standards test, the difference of $125 per versus $1250, $2,900, $1,700, $6,500, I mean, that's pretty substantial cost saving.
I mean, they were the low bidder, so. And the next one is 50% higher, and the next one up is 200% higher, so I think we're comfortable. If they performed well for the price, I think there really shouldn't be any question about moving forward with them.
Any other council comment? Secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Councilmember Orlando, would you do item number F?
Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019-269, so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
And as was mentioned, this is the backup, and as was stated, we have had need because of scheduling and demand on when we need these off hours, et cetera, that the primary wasn't available, so we have to have this lined up, so.
Councilor, have any question to comment on this item, based on staff report?
Yeah, I've got, I asked this to come up again, because, you know, it's similar to the other one, and it looks like it's what, $50-something thousand was the amount. And again, I don't know how much money we spent in the present budget for them to do this. It looks like the, when this was bid out previously, it was bid through a contract with two extensions. And so we're in our second extension with this company here, for the $50-something thousand, but, or $55,980, I guess what it is. But I guess one of the things that was stated in here of looking at it was said that on the, one reason that we're renewing it is because they're holding the price at the same thing it was last year. And that kind of leads me to believe that it might have been a little bit higher last year than it should have been, if they're able to hold it for a year period of time without increasing at all, from what was said, and the scope and justification for it. But again, you know, I'd like to see if they had the contract last year, how much was spent for last year, last budget year on there, to be able to look at that and why we're coming in with just $50-something thousand, and it's not an increase of higher than that, if this is actually the second term of a three-year contract.
Well, we can send you the spend amounts. I don't know how we can answer the other part. I mean, they held it, as was mentioned, they were the backup, but we need somebody to do that, and so their rate is higher, so overall, it's better for the city with the primary, as is. So if they chose to hold their, you know, the scale of their operations so much less in terms of their spend, what we spend with them, that might factor into it.
Yeah, I was just looking at it from the standpoint of them coming in bidding the first contract, I guess that was in 17, or 18, excuse me, and then coming in and picking it up again for the second term on there, but it said as, part of the agreement there is because they didn't increase the price, they held it at the same thing it was when it was in 18.
So, Mr. Owens, we do have in all our contracts the ability for the contractor to, if we renew the contract, to go up with the Consumer Price Index amount, up to that amount. And in this particular case, we're glad that they chose not to do that.
We don't think it was if we were to have the last time, right?
Well, we bid it out, and those are the bids that came in. They were the second low bidder, and we typically, in this particular case, we awarded on low bid and second low bid as a secondary contract. So I think it's good for us that they didn't choose to take that consumer price option and increase the rates.
All right, thank you. Any other comment from council?
Yes, Mayor, I have one. Is there not like some kind of, I don't want to say like buy board, but some kind of cooperative with some other cities or counties for our environmental testing for the wastewater treatment plants?
I actually do not know of any. I've been doing this a very long time. It's a good thought, but it's not something I have ever heard of, but I'll certainly check into it.
Just notice that council's aware, we make extensive use of buy boards wherever we can, they're appropriate, it's more efficient for us, and, you know, get the economy of scale for multiples, so. But apparently not for this professional service yet.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment from the staff, from the council, or staff report? Here you go, Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Orlando, item I.
Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019-272, so moved.
Second.
That was item L putting on the table. Have a second on that.
Aye.
Seconded, okay. We're in, we're in, aye.
Thank you, Sir Mayor and Council. Item I is a, we went out as a part of our capital improvement program for upgrades to our Berry Rose Water Reclamation Facility. We had, we were working on a construction manager risk process. We did have pre-bid meetings and had anticipated more quantity of responses, however, when those came in, we only had one, and the pricing on that was significantly higher than our estimates. We've done some discussions with other, the bidders that had expressed interest earlier, and I think it's a combination of schedules and just not anticipating that they're, they'd have a chance at it. So we've, are suggesting, recommending for the best interest of the city, that we put those back out and go back through the process. It's a large, significant amount, so we'll get, we believe, with some more notice and going back out again, we'll get attention to it, and we'll get more competitive bids for the city. So this is just rejecting the formality of that required, since we put that out, this proposal that we did receive.
Councilor, have any question or comment on staff report?
Go ahead.
Do we think that the, that the reason that we had so few bidders is just because we combined the two projects?
Robert probably talked to that better than I, yeah. Councilman Perez, no, the answer isn't that. We had multiple vendors show up. It just came down to a scheduling. We talked to some that were scheduling out at the same time. They were bidding three other jobs, and they didn't feel that they could get a shot, so they decided not to submit. Another one was the resource allocation of superintendents. They wanted to wait. And then the third one that we spoke to that had been here to submit basically stated that they were unsure if they could beat the competition, and they decided not to submit at the last moment by the president of the company. And so we were left with one, and a thank you, a thank you letter for the opportunity, but they'll pass it this time. So that's why we're going to repackage, remarket, and go back out again, is what we'd like to do.
So nothing structurally associated with the CMA, CMR, or any part of the project? We just think we just ran into bad luck with scheduling?
On that particular one, that would be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So it looked like we, the one we had come in, Pepper Lawson, and so you'll come up next?
I'm sorry, sir.
Next meeting?
Oh, for, for John Hargrove Environmental Center, yes. That process will be talked about at that upcoming meeting.
Okay. One thing I'd like to, on, you know, we just talked about the minority requirements here a couple of weeks ago on the, the funds that we're using on this, is that from the City of Pearland funds, or is that some of the we got out of the Texas Water Quality Board?
For this particular project right now, it is City of Pearland funds, but we are in the process, that'll be upcoming, I know, that'll be in the process of working with our consultant right now with Texas Water Development Board. We bid this particular work along with our consultant to procure and try and obligate those funds from TWDB.
Okay. Is there going to be a minority requirement on this when you bring it back to us from Pepper Lawson?
There will be goals that'll be associated with, well, Councilman Owens, with regards to the JHEC, that'll be a discussion that we'll have later. With regards to Berry Rose, if we go through the process with TWDB, those goals would be established through TWDB.
Okay. Well, when it comes back with the contract, I'd like for us to, you know, it'll be Pepper Lawson as the prime on the contract, but I'd like to see what minority firms that they have on there and what the percentages are, because I would imagine at the end of the contract that we would come back and take a review of what the goals were for the minority participation, to make sure that it did come out. I know the state does that on theirs.
Yes, Councilman Owens, when we come back for award, we'll say for that particular project, wherever you go from there, that'll be a pre-construction services award. Their subs will not be selected until they head towards the GMP and guaranteed maximum price, that then they will have to advertise and award and competitively bid those items in that process. And then at that time, when the guaranteed maximum price for this, for a project under the C Mar process, then at that time, they would be known what subs will be used. It won't be at the time of pre-construction services.
Okay, so we'd still be able to, as a council, to be able to take a look at the awarded contract from the minority firms that participated and what the goal was? Because I would, I would suspect it's incumbent on the city to come in and to take a look at those goals and see if they're maintained.
That is our obligation with regards to Texas Water Development Board.
Okay.
Just to be clear, that'll be not at, what you'll see next time, it'll be the second phase.
Second phase.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a quick question. How often do we make sure that they meet those goals? Like, if they don't meet those goals, I mean, because there's a difference between a goal and something that's- and something that's like a requirement, right? And so, you know, if they don't meet those goals, do we care?
As long as they make every attempt, Texas Water Development Boards make sure that we advertise, that we make every attempt possible to meet those goals, then we fulfill the obligation. It is not a requirement, but it is a goal to try and attempt to meet. As long as we've shown advertisement, that we've done our due diligence, and the contractor has done his due diligence, then we've satisfied that requirement.
So, so not we, the city, but the contractor that we're talking about right here?
We still have to meet that with our, with us, because the money and the funding is through the city. So we have to verify to make sure with our contractor that all goals are attempted to be made, they've advertised, and they've done their due diligence, and then we have to show that verification with Texas Water Development Board.
That's why it's important to make sure that we show the firms on there and the scope of work that they're going to be providing up under the contract and what percentage that work is within the contract, and it's how they meet their goal. But I think it's incumbent upon us to look at that to see. And if they don't, I'm sure we have to turn it into the Texas Water Board.
Yeah. Councilman Owens, as stated earlier, is that we will, we have to verify to make sure that they've met obligatory requirements associated with the percentages set forth to meet those goals as required by Texas Water Development Board, and we have to submit that paperwork.
Any further comment from council? Here you go, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we have consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty nineteen dash two-seven-five, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Smear. This is a replacement truck for one that was way past useful service life and went out, and we do have this sourced through Rush Truck Center for the amounts that's there, and we will, we bought the base package, and then there was one or two other groups. Some of them, if you're buying a car, that comes with a group of items that come with accessories and so forth that are appropriate for the final installation and service delivery for us to enter service for Public Works.
Counsel, any further questions or comments? I just had some questions on it. On this truck that we're buying, the new one, we're replacing a International, I guess it is, was purchased in nineteen ninety-six, so it's twenty-three years old, seventy-eight thousand five hundred miles on it. I was concerned that we're buying a Peterbilt truck, and I did call some of the, or one of, actually, just one of the locations that sell those, and ask them, you know, because mainly the Peterbilt trucks are actually trucks that are long haul type trucks. And I asked them, you know, how, what would be the ability for that truck really to last? And they said, well, if the maintenance was properly done, it would last from two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand miles. And I got to thinking, well, if we had more for twenty-three years, seventy-eight thousand five hundred miles on it, I mean, I guess this one would probably, if we did the maintenance, last forty years. But, you know, they're not cheap trucks. This one's what, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, something like that, I guess, on there. And I just wondered, you know, there's other trucks out there, especially if it's going to be a ten-yard dump truck, and, you know, we're nineteen miles by eight miles wide and seventy-two square miles is what it amounts to. But, so, and, you know, even at this one, you know, an individual told me, said, well, even if you do, you know, you probably, if you have one that long, you probably wouldn't be able to get parts for it in the first place. But anyway, and I wonder why, because the other trucks that we ordered previously were both Peterbilt trucks, and so roughly right now with the three vehicles, you know, we're close to half a million dollars for the trucks. And going through that is, you know, is it Ford, Chevrolet, Mack, or International that would be very competitive on that? You know, you see a lot of those on the road, or it's trucks that are used for, you know, ten-yard dump trucks or what have you on there. But normally, the Peterbilt, and I mentioned it last time when we bought those other two, that those are usually long haul trucks, and on short hauls around, you know, within a city, you really don't get the quality of truck that you really need that you do on a long haul type truck that goes, you know, thousands and hundreds of thousands of miles once you put it on the roadway out there. And so I just want to find out, you know, is this something that we're locked in with those kind of trucks, or is there something we could do to get, you know, another truck at a different price, a lower price, or does that pretty well market value for any of them?
Councilman Owens, in order to get the competitive pricing that we do through the HESE, I mean, we are limited somewhat. That's, I guess that's a factual statement. They've already done the competitive bidding, these Peterbilt, this is what they have based on the specs that have been bid out for other cities or through their by board, basically. So that's what they have based on our needs. So if we weren't to use that, would it be potentially to get other trucks? I would imagine so, but I know Jacoby and his team actually do a great deal of research to look at what will meet the needs, to look at the specs. And one of the reasons that International only made, even though it was twenty-three years old, only made seventy-eight thousand miles is quite frankly because it wasn't International. I don't know else to say on that. They don't do good in public, you know, settings.
Yeah, okay. I mean, did you buy it to city, Houston, when you were there?
None, because they were all already, you know, you worked there, Councilman Owens, you know the deal. Actually, I've never bought Peterbilt or International for the city of Houston.
Yeah, usually, you know, that's why, you know, of these three that we've bought, including this one, I know which will be approved. But anyway, these are actually the Peterbilt trucks are long haul type trucks, you know, from one end of the United States to the other, and you run them for eight hours solid through there, but, you know, keeping up with the maintenance on it. But that's what I was wondering, if there's any other thing that, from the HGAC, that is comparable to this or whatever. That's all I have, Mayor. Okay. Anybody else on the council have a question or comment? Here you go, Madam Secretary. We've got a motion second here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens? Motion passes six to zero.
Moving down through our agenda, the next item is item eight-seven. That is removed from council agenda. We just handled four of those and completed them. Item eight is new business. Councilmember Reed, would you present item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty nineteen dash two-seven-eight, so moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Smear, council. This is an item that pleased to present. I know with the council's support, we lost one of our longtime employees who was a mainstay of our operations, some, an area that, you know, sort of lots of work, lots of demands, lots of competing interests, much in the public eye, and that's our animal services operation. We were fortunate to have with us for seventeen years. Sherry Coleman is our animal services director, and as we all know, she passed away a couple months ago. The idea that's been put forward and has our strong support as well is that with our new animal shelter that we're going to be building at Freedom Drive, that that be named the Sherry D. Coleman Animal Shelter and Adoption Center, I think could be a fitting tribute for her years of dedicated service to the community, animals, pet owners, interested people all over that has this designation. I know many of Sherry's colleagues are here in the audience just to support this and have interest in that, as well as Sherry's daughter, who is also an employee of ours. So I think it'd be appropriate for the council consideration and ask your consideration of this.
Council, any other question or comment on that? And before we vote, I'd like to ask the family to stand up. Wonderful, thank you so much.
So, Mayor, council, we're obviously in the design of that, and we're going to be bringing those back to you to report in shortly, but we'll also show you how that name will be a part of the package for that when the time's appropriate, so.
Wonderful. Council, any other question or comment on this item?
Mayor, I'll just say, you know, I worked with her for several years. She was, she was a great person. She really was dedicated to the animals she served, the city she served, the citizens she served. I don't, you know, I don't know if we could have ever asked for a better employee, so I think it's an appropriate move. I'm glad that this was seconded by one of my other fellow council members. I'm glad that staff moved so expeditiously to get this done. I remember the last time she was here, there was a conversation about some of the animal services, and there was a ream of people that came out to talk about our animal shelter and our, well, her particularly, to compliment her and let us know what a great job she was doing, and I think it ended up in a round of applause for her because she was just such a commendable, she did such a commendable job, and she took that job so seriously and brought so much to it. She'll just never be replaced, but I think this is definitely a way for us to permanently commemorate all that she did for our city.
Any other comment from council? I got one thing, a little story that we got a call, actually, my wife got a call from there of a rat terrier that they thought that would be interested in. That's been several years ago. We went over, actually, the wife went over there, and she fell in love with the dog, and she said, okay, well, we'll foster the dog for a little while. And for about three weeks, we fostered a dog, and I would take it riding, and it would sit in the front seat, and it would look out the window and just prime and proper as it could be. And so wife and I decided we was going to keep the dog. And so we went over and signed the papers and everything to keep the dog. The next day, I took the dog out riding, and he jumped from the front seat to the back seat, to front seat, to back seat, up and down the road. And I told her wife, I said, we should have never told him that we was going to keep him. But that was our first one we had, and the dog, we had it for, we had to put it to sleep, had it for sixteen years, but we were very appreciative. She called and told us, you know, that we had a dog over there we needed, so. We're very. That, that sounds great. Any other comment from council at this point? Secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor. I can tell you what the vote's going to be.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
A very, very easy aye, yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number, new business item number two. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number one-three-three-zero-dash-one, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion.
Yes, Smear, and council, this is the second reading, an item that you saw last meeting, but there was, you know, both sides have perspective on this, but this is to update our smoking prohibitions and recognize the new technology, if you will, of vapless and smoking, and to provide that in the definition, so it'd be uniform in prohibiting in public restaurants and other places, the vaping would be considered the same as traditional smoke.
Council, any other discussion or comments based on the staff report?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I was against this last time when it came up. I think this is overreach of government. If a business so chooses not to allow vaping in their establishment, then so be it, but I don't think this deploys the government to ban this, so I'll be a no vote.
Mayor, I'll follow those comments. I do believe that this is not, I'll reiterate what I said last minute, it's not a necessary move. I don't think the science is there yet, and I also think that we're amending, amending an ordinance that was put to the voters, we should have the voters make that amendment as opposed to us doing it on their behalf, so that's why I'll be voting no.
Any further counsel report or comments? Mayor, in just this past week, I guess it was, federal government's making the decision now, raise the age on vaping to twenty-one. It's, they do that, is that we have to comply with that, right?
Yes, we. If that's a federal regulation, yes, we would.
Yeah, because that's, they're finding out more and more on the consequences for vaping and the percentage of the young people that are involved in it now, and that's why they cut it down, all the flavors out with the exception of two. But now their consideration is to raise the age to twenty-one.
Two quick things from me, just going along the history lesson of how this came about. This was actually proposed by a group of sixth graders back in two thousand and seven, and the reason that it went to the ballot box is because the council at that time did not approve it, and so they initiated, in a pretty stunning thing, a citizen initiated referendum to take that directly to the people, but back then, it was something that could have been decided by the council, and they chose not to take it up. And when it did pass, it was with over eighty percent of the vote. And then, secondly, I would say, the state of Texas is not really known for being a big government place, but the state of Texas has already recognized the risk of these e-cigarettes and is treating them the same way as smoking. They've banned them in the use, they banned their use in schools, elevators, enclosed theaters, libraries, museums, hospitals, Department of Criminal Justice facilities, childcare facilities, and foster homes. So this is really just a common sense extension of the will of the people of Pearland.
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you.
So I'll add to this from a public health perspective as well. I think the impetus for this coming forward, at least from my perspective, was that there seems to be a rise also based on reports across different news sources that people are turning to creating their own vaping juices at home, which include the lipids and things like that, that when ingested, even secondhand, can cause lipoid pneumonia, which can be a very serious health risk for especially certain populations, vulnerable populations. So I think it's incumbent upon us to protect those vulnerable populations. I think that's one of the foundations of public health and public health policy, and that's one of the big reasons why I support this.
Any other staff comment from the staff report? I'm sorry. I don't hear anybody else. Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor here.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two.
Moving in our agenda, item number three. Councilmember Hernandez, would you present this for our consideration?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first reading ordinance two-zero-zero-zero-M dash one-nine-three, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Sir, this is a first reading for an amendment to an existing plan development, and the amendment is to allow for microblading, which as it is current, does require a specific carve-out for the use in the plan development. We are separately looking at UDC amendments so that this step wouldn't be necessary, but for now, it's required for this PD, and it's got a positive recommendation for your consideration.
Any counsel report or response to the staff report? Here you go, Madam Secretary, we have a motion second on the floor, right there.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving to item number four on the agenda, Councilmember Moore.
Moving to item number four on the agenda, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1517 dash three, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion.
Sir, this is a relatively small amendment to our existing thoroughfare plan, deals with future roadway that had been envisioned over to Dixie Farm Road. It came about as a result of a development project that came about there. We did make a negative staff recommendation, but it is before council for your consideration to move this forward, which I believe would facilitate the development as the applicant had, had requested.
Council, have any question or comment on this item from staff based on staff report? Hearing none, we have a motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item number five. Councilmember Perez, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first reading number ordinance, ordinance number 2000 Tango dash 31, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
This is a first reading for various text amendments to the zoning ordinance or U D C. Some of them deal with some of the procedural definitions and clarifications. Also, the microblading was mentioned earlier, but this would recognize that, make that a little bit easier for property owners, so it's a package. Got a couple of these moving forward, this is the first of those, and been through and have positive recommendations from your P and Z and staff.
Council, have any question or comment on this item?
One, one click, quick note of clarification. So all the other P Ds that we have, like, say, like Town Center or Shadow Creek, are we going to have to come back? Or shouldn't we have to come back and clarify that microblading is going to be an approved use? It doesn't require C U P. Can we do that in a subsequent, if so, can we do that subsequent meeting while the conversation's still fresh?
Yes, that would be a future amendment.
It'll be within the next few weeks, do we know?
We'll schedule it out.
Okay, thank you.
Complete staff report?
Sir.
And for clarification, how many more of these U D C amendments do we have coming up? I was kind of under the impression that this was the, the last one resulting from that, from the ad hoc committee that we convened earlier this year.
I think from the ad hoc, correct me if I'm wrong, Martin, but we have some other ones moving, two and up?
Correct. So while during the past year, when we've been working on the report from the ad hoc committee, we've also had some additional thoughts and ideas floating around between the collaborative efforts of both Public Works, engineering, building staff, and planning staff. So we have some internal corrections that we're, we'll be bringing forward in the near future.
And then, just before we vote on this, can I get, I, I believe we've discussed this before, but can I just get some clarification around the, the thinking around striking the outdoor seating, the outdoor activity, and the outdoor storage components?
Yes, sir. So throughout each of the non-residential zoning districts, primarily the commercial, there are different, different ways of describing and different ways of showing outdoor seating, outdoor storage, outdoor display, and outdoor sales. This removes it from each of those separate zoning districts and brings it into one space where it uses the same language throughout.
Thank you.
Any other comments from staff on this item? Council, have any response, any comment at this point? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, we've got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving to new business, item number six. Councilmember Owens?
Consideration, possible action, resolution number R 2019 dash two two zero, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Yes, sir, this is a putting into place a contract, so at our disposal for adding another option for sidewalk repair maintenance, existing sidewalks. Missouri City had bid this out. We ourselves have tested the contractor and the, the approach, and so see that it's very viable and would be helpful for us to add for those areas where it's suitable not to have to replace the concrete, but to instead bring it back up and get more useful life with less investment. So asking your consideration to add this contract into our mix of services for Public Works for the year upcoming.
Council, have any question or comment on this staff report?
Yes, Mayor. So would this be generally considered as part of the sidewalk, the budgeted sidewalk repair?
Yes.
Other comments from council? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, we've got a motion second on the floor here.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving to item number seven on our agenda, Councilmember Orlando, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019 dash two seven six, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor. Staff report.
And this is a contract for replacement vehicles, light vehicles across our fleet, including a large number of police cruisers. And this would, as part of our FY '20 budget that we're obviously getting into and trying to get into place, I want to place this order, this is off the buy board, and so it's for the 22 vehicles, as noted here. And the outfitting of that will be a sub from Silsby, the recommended contractor.
Council, have any question or comment on that item? Is this a budgeted item?
Yes.
Thank you. Information in the record, Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving to new business, item number eight. Councilmember Reed, after you.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019 dash two six five, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is a recommendation for awarding a, a contract for drainage improvements, primarily around the Brookney Street area. Excuse me, solicited for bidders, and Triple B was, is a recommended bidder here. It is associated with, tangentially with the Hughes Ranch Road project, but it is a, a separate project that came about as a result of some of that engineering work and would improve the drainage in that existing area.
Council, have any comments to make based on staff report?
Doesn't Triple B already have the contract on Hughes Ranch?
Councilman Owen, that is correct. They are out there working again after some utility conflicts with A T and T and other drives. They're out there working now, and this will be, yeah.
I just wondered, since he's already out there, why they charging his mobilization?
It's all part of the contract.
Any further counsel, councilman comments? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, we're wearing you out of nope, that's, we have a staff report.
Councilmember Reed?
Motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Reed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item number nine. Mayor, council issues for city council discussion, there have been none reported for this session. Item 10, 10, executive session under Texas Governor Code, section 551.074 for personnel matters regarding the annual evaluation of the municipal court judge, and also for section 551.074 personnel matters regarding annual evaluation of the city attorney. Obviously, we can discuss these items with those individuals in the executive session, but we cannot make a decision in executive session. But if on return to open session, we'll have a response and action at that time. At this time, we will recess at 37. Agenda here. Moving to new business as a result of activities in the council, consideration possible action regarding the annual evaluation of the municipal court judge.
Mayor, I make motion that we accept discussion in executive session on the annual evaluation of the municipal judge.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Those who favor that motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
That's all right. Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving to item, new business, item number 10, regarding the annual evaluation of the city attorney.
Mayor, for the last time, I move that we, for the last time, the last, last official read motion, I move that we adopt the discussion on the city attorney's annual evaluation as, as discussed in the back, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item number 10 of the business, there is none. Item 13, adjournment, which I shall do at 910.